I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ununderground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome you to tonight's city council meeting, as well as those that might be watching on cable TV seven. The next item is the consent agenda, or there are items that need to be pulled. If not, I would accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bell.
Aye.
Councilman Levy.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a public hearing on rezoning of the First Baptist Church. Mr. Peller.
Your honor, the city has the following exhibits to enter into the record: city council information form with attachments, staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication as advertised in the Blue Springs Examiner, July 6, 2013, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of sight, and copy of letter sent to the property owners. These are all the city exhibits we have to offer.
Mr. Allen, on behalf of the city?
Thank you, your honor, and members of the council. Given before this evening is a request to rezone our First Baptist Church property located in South 7th Highway. It's currently a mix of different zonings: GB General Business, CB Central Business, and TF2 Family Residential, and the church is requesting to rezone the entire property to GB General Business entirely. Property itself is 36.7 acres; there are two lots on that property, as it currently stands. It was previously part of a larger Chapman Farms-related project called Chapman Woods Village PUD. First Baptist Church has since purchased that and are now looking at constructing a new and larger church away from the downtown, as they currently have. The property was first annexed into the city back in 2003, again, as a part of that larger Chapman Farms project, and 2008 was when, you may recall, seeing kind of first plans drawn up for Chapman Woods Village PUD at that point. Only a comprehensive plan map amendment was done at that time. So applicant is moving forward with, I have already gone through with planning commission, preliminary plat, as well as site plan design review approval. Both of those, again, as I just noted, are approved through the planning commission. They do recommend, as well with this rezoning, to approve the rezoning request, and they do so unanimously for you tonight. With this, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Allen? Not, thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come and make comments?
Good evening.
Good morning.
Oh, yep.
You saw me swear to the testimony about giving this case to the truth, so I gather.
I do.
Engineering Solutions.
It's Matt Slish with Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Lee Summit, Missouri. On behalf of First Baptist Church, we appreciate the time this evening. As we stated, the planning commission, we had a number of other items that came along with it, as far as the site plan, the rezoning, and the preliminary plat. The church has owned this property for a number of years now, and is just starting to look to get this development going. They've kind of outgrown their space currently in downtown and looking to expand out and hopefully gather some new members for the church. So I don't have a lot to say. I think it's a pretty simple situation. We have a number of different zoning districts in there. We try to pick at the city's direction, correct zoning district for the site for our use. Currently, it's just, or it's going to be planned to just be a church facility, a larger facility, that has multiple phases to it, that continues to develop as time and space requirements extend, so.
Okay. Are there any questions from the council? Councilman Culpepper?
Are you ready to school, or actually have a school agenda?
At this time, there's no school required, or school designed for. They have the preschool that they currently have up there, but they don't have a daily school, such as like Timothy Lutheran does across the street. They don't have a daily K through whatever. It's just the pre-K they have over there, as they will now.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of? Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? I'll phrase it a different way. Anyone in opposition to? In opposition to, we'll close this public hearing. May I like to introduce it?
I'll introduce you, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number 4263, an ordinance rezoning property from GB, CBTF, General Business, Central Business, 2 Family Residential to GB General Business.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4263, an ordinance rezoning property from GB, CBTF, General Business, Central Business, 2 Family Residential to GB General Business.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Levy.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bell.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given in audit number 4442.
Next, we have a public hearing on rezoning of Brookwood Village Townhomes.
Your honor, the city has the following exhibits to enter into the record: the city council information form with attachments, staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication as advertised in the Blue Springs Examiner, July 6, 2013, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of sight, and copy of letter sent to property owners. These are all the exhibits the city has to offer.
Ms. Allen, on behalf of the city?
Thank you again, your honor, and members of the council. Given before this evening is a request to rezone property related to the Brookwood Village Townhomes project. Currently, the zoning is MF20/RO. They're looking to rezone to MF14. As you may recall, back in 2009, the city underwent a process to update the Unified Development Code to include multifamily design standards. As a part of that, new zoning districts were created and older ones eliminated related to multifamily. MF20 is one of those that was eliminated. So with that, staff worked with the applicant to look at some options for new zoning, under the new zoning categories, and MF14 is what fits the proposal. It's 1.9 acres in size at RD Mize and Sunnyside School Road, and they're looking at four townhome buildings, each with four units each, so a total of 16 units. And in that, just under two acres, MF14 seemed to be the best fit, which is moderate density, multifamily. This is significantly less than what was originally proposed back in 2008, with the last proposal for this property, which was approximately 32 units. So almost about half, if not exactly half, of what was originally proposed. The property under MF14 does allow up to 26 units. So with that, again, applicant went before a planning commission back on July 22nd. Planning commission has recommended approval of rezoning unanimously, and the only thing remaining, the applicant is going forward with site plan design review. They have some modifications to make yet. They were originally scheduled for a planning commission next week. They're now going forward on August 26th. So they are adhering to and following the multifamily design guidelines, as we've been walking them through that process. And again, with that, it's a little bit unique, just to add, that it's essentially an expansion of the existing Brookwood Village Townhomes to the south and to the east of the subject property, and that's why you may see in that planning commission materials and such coming forward, you know, a pool, clubhouse, things of that sort. It's not a standalone project, like the original project was going forward back in 2008. It's essentially an expansion of the existing townhome development immediately around the property. So with that, again, planning commission has recommended approval unanimously to change zoning to fit the proposed project to MF14.
Is there any questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
The applicant present, would like to make comments?
No comments.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? In support of? In opposition to? Opposition to, we'll close this public hearing. Anyone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce you, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number 4264, an ordinance rezoning property from MF20/RO, Moderate Density, Multifamily District, Restricted Overlay, to MF14, Moderate Density, Multifamily District.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second? Second. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4264, an ordinance rezoning property from MF20/RO, Moderate Density, Multifamily District, Restricted Overlay, to MF14, Moderate Density, Multifamily District.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bell.
Aye.
Councilman Levy.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given in audit number 4443.
Next, we have a public hearing on the CDBG Annual Action Plan.
Your honor, the city has the parliament exhibits to enter into the record: city council information form from Scott Allen, Director of Community Development, CDBG 2013 through 2014 Annual Action Plan, and affidavit of publication as advertised in the Blue Springs Examiner, July 20th and 26th, 2013. These are all the records, or exhibits the city has to offer.
Ms. Allen?
All right, thank you again, your honor, and members of the council. Before this evening is the final step in the process to submit to HUD our annual action plan for CDBG funds. This is the fiscal year 2013-2014, totaling approximately $212,000. As shown in the council information form, there are several projects and programs that are being proposed after extensive discussion over several council meetings and internally amongst staff as well. You can see in the list there, the Downtown Facade Grant Program, looking to continue that at a smaller amount than the first kind of Keystone Project, the America's Community Bank. This is only looking at about 7% of the total, or $15,000 for this next year, and again, seeing if there are some smaller properties that would be interested in participating in that. Secondly, largest portion, looking at 47% of the total, or $100,000, for Blue Springs Park Playground Service. This is the first of several, I'm sure, we'll be looking at from Parks Department with some of their needs analysis that was done not long ago. Thirdly, have the Minor Home Repair Program, continuing that, approximately a quarter of the funds, or $50,000. This has been a very successful program over the last several years. Processing a number of those right now, you may be seeing work, I guess, being undertaken here in the next few months. Actually, I think the first four or five are now kind of in the books, and we have another six to eight yet to get underway for this current fiscal year. First-time homebuyers program, that is also a very successful program, looking at 17% of the total, or $36,000. We've been utilizing pretty much all that funding each year with very little carryover, but we're moving forward with that again. And finally, looking at providing funds, as we did to the current fiscal year, to Downtown Alive Group, in just a small amount of $5,000. And then finally, just a small 3% of the total, looking at CDBG administrative funds, and that's kind of consistent with what we've done the last several years, looking at about 3% of those funds, which is a very small amount compared to what could be used for administrative funds. We do have, besides myself, we have two staff dedicated to administering the projects and programs beyond just the actual department CC. Again, Parks Department will be intimately involved this coming year, but we've had Public Works Department involved of several projects, as you know, downtown, a lot of sidewalks and related infrastructure programs and projects, I should say. And then we have two staff in Community Development Department, again, besides myself, Lauren Goudy, our associate planner, who handles a lot of the Minor Home Repair Program, and then Mike Peterman, who oversees the overall program, but works most closely with the first-time homebuyers program. So with that, again, this is a public hearing, so it would open up to any questions or comments before we submit this to HUD. August 15th is the deadline to get the plan to HUD, and just a final comment, there was the 30-day announcement from, it ran from June 24th through July 23rd. Staff did not receive any specific comments during that time from the public on the programs or projects being planned for this next year with an action plan, and you do have the copy of the draft plan that we are looking to submit pending outcome of tonight's meeting.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Allen? Seeing none? Thank you. We'll go to the public. If anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? In support of? In opposition to? Opposition to?
Yes. Yeah, do you have some council comments for the record?
Sure.
Yeah, I wanted to reiterate the concern that I had back on the June 17th council meeting relative to the public money going into private business. Taking the public money and putting it into a for-profit business when this money is dedicated to low-income families and reducing blight in their neighborhoods. In that meeting, I did bring up slides where the public money could be used for public safety needs, where we have sidewalks that are broken. Matter of fact, from the businesses money is going to, you can actually see the broken sidewalks. I also talked about taking the public money and putting it into public streets instead of a private business. At that time, one of the council members said, hey, don't, aren't we ahead on the streets program? And city staff said, yeah, we're ahead on the streets program, okay, as if to say, you know, we don't need any money for streets. But I want to reiterate that I think that the public's money should be a priority to public infrastructure and public safety. Giving it to a private business is not judicious use of that tax money, in my opinion. I think that the public infrastructure, public safety comes first, and I encourage my colleagues to think differently about this next year. If there's anybody that would want a second motion to amend, I'd certainly make that motion again tonight, so. Anyway, want to put that on the record, Your Honor. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make comments for the record before we close this public hearing? Seeing none? We will close this public hearing. Does anyone like to make a motion to adopt a resolution for the CDBG Annual Action Plan?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second? Seconds?
Second.
One of you?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poll same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to a presentation by Combat, and as you make your way up, I can tell you that we really appreciate having Combat's presence in the city of Blue Springs, along with the Blue Springs School District. We are raising generations of children in Blue Springs that will say no to drugs because of our DARE program. The DARE program has been very successful. I try to attend all the graduations, along with the chief, and when he doesn't, the deputy chief or someone is represented from the police department. You all might, I might know this, but I'm going to give him his kudos. We're very fortunate to have a person that I call the Dean of DARE, and he's better known by the children as CW, Charlie Waits, who's been a Blue Springs police officer for probably close to 40 years, a long time, and the kids love it. I just tell them, he better not run for mayor, because all the kids would vote him in. But CW has done a great job with that, and we're just very proud. And I know Combat does a lot more than just DARE, but we're very proud of the relationship we have with the DARE program. And so, and also standing, holding the wall up over there is the chief law enforcement officer from the county of Jackson, Sheriff Sharp. We're happy to have you.
And I'm going to split my time with the sheriff, so whenever I have, when the sheriff joins us, I want to make sure that you can hear from him. Thank you so much, Mayor and council, for allowing us to come before you this afternoon. It's been a couple of years, I think, when I first came to Combat last time that I did present before you. So I'm not going to read all of these slides, because you can, you know, see them, but just to kind of refresh your memory, this in front of you now is the breakdown, it's adopted by the Jackson County Legislature by ordinance, and it is in the brochure, you have the breakdown of the funding for Combat, and we do stick with that formula. Okay, and my deputy chief, Muns, you're, okay, I think, yeah, there you go. Okay, so what I wanted to show you was just some of the programs that are in Blue Springs and where your residents are receiving Combat services. And as the mayor said, you have a very full and thriving DARE program. I believe it's active in all of the elementary schools that are actually located in Blue Springs, private schools as well as public schools. And I have seen the mayor, every time I go to a DARE graduation, and Charlie Waits is just a legend, if you've never seen him and his karate, and, you know, the different things he does to engage the kids. I mean, it really does make this one of the most successful DARE programs that we have in the county. Just some of the other programs that you might not know serve some of your Blue Springs residents. Of course, the biggest one is the Blue Springs Community and Youth Outreach Unit, and two of our biggest friends in Blue Springs are the Blue Springs Police Department, and then the Blue Springs School District. Dave Foster is here from the Blue Springs School District Department of Public Safety. Dave, you would wave. Dave started a new program a couple of years ago, it's called Eastern Jackson County Schools Collaborative, that serves, he serves kids from, he got superintendents from Lone Jack and Grain Valley and Oak Grove and Blue Springs to work together, and then visit, he can take referrals from different schools, elementary, middle schools, high schools, but Blue Springs is the one who came up with that idea and coordinates that program for the whole eastern parts of Jackson County. I think that would be the, what, southeastern parts of the county. Big program for us. Some of the other programs throughout the county that serve residents from Blue Springs, and they truly are located throughout the county, residential children's programs, child abuse prevention, child abuse programs that where kids maybe have been abused, to do the forensic interviews, very important program for our prosecutor, serves residents from Blue Springs as well as the rest of the county. And then some of the mental health and substance abuse treatment centers that, throughout the county, that serve Blue Springs residents. So last year, we served about 900 DARE kids and another 2,000 residents of Blue Springs and other programs. In 2012, we served a little over 3,000 residents of Blue Springs with Combat-funded programs. Okay, on the law enforcement program, some of you may know about Vince Ortega, our deputy director, the High Risk Offender Program, and it, as well as, of course, we have several law enforcement and prosecution programs that Blue Springs residents are able to take advantage of, family drug code, drug code, drug treatment, and even in the detention center, we have drug treatment. But the High Risk Offender Program is a multi-jurisdictional program that has representatives from jails, from correctional institutes, from Wyandotte County, Johnson County, all over, Jackson County, Missouri Probation and Parole, the US Attorney's Office, and they meet once a month, and they've come up with a list of high-risk offenders, dangerous offenders, that they want to take off the street, and Blue Springs is an active member of this consortium. Two of the 29 offenders that have been identified were submitted by Blue Springs. And as I said, Vince is expanding that program, it's been operating for a little over a year now. Just a chart to show you over the past four years, funding to agencies in Blue Springs, primarily Blue Springs Police Department and the Blue Springs School District. And as the mayor said, the reason we're here tonight is to talk about our new anti-violence program. When Combat was reauthorized in 2009, the mission was expanded to include violence, to address violence. And so we started in February with this current initiative to go out into neighborhoods. We're picking 12 communities throughout the county. We're on number nine this week, we'll be in Blue Springs on Friday, and community residents come out with us and help us canvass. The police department helps us identify areas that they would like to see us spread the word. You have the door hanger in front of you that we'll be passing out, and then we'll be, you've seen these billboards, hopefully, and we'll be passing out to residents who want them, the door, the door hanger, and the yard signs. And what we're really encouraging people to do is get involved in crime prevention and recognize that it's not just the police job, that everybody has a role in crime prevention. So if you're available, we would love to see you Friday at 11:00. Our staging area is going to be at Kings Ridge Shopping Center. And I'd like the mayor, I'm sorry, I'd like the sheriff to come forward and say a couple of more words about this, step-up speak-up campaign.
Thank you, Stacey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Miss City Clerk Kathy Richardson, how are you? You probably never get addressed properly, do you? I guess I'm here, more or less, just to let you know how fortunate we are as citizens of Jackson County, that we've got such an organization like Combat. I know that Deputy Chief Muns and I work closely together on the Jackson County Drug Task Force, which brings all of us smaller communities in Eastern Jackson County closer together on the law enforcement side, and brings us in a more cooperative atmosphere on how we deal with each other on a daily basis. Believe it or not, sometimes law enforcement agencies have turf issues. You know, you can't come into my city and, yeah, I won't go into yours, and be fortunate and encounter blessings that in this day and time, and the way things are right now, that doesn't happen any longer. We talk to each other on a daily basis through the Drug Task Force, through Kansas City's Street Narcotics Unit, but also be aware that these programs that Combat has put out for us, and I learned about them after I became sheriff, so I'm new to all of what they've provided, because I was a cop in Kansas City for so many years, I was insulated from Eastern Jackson County in a lot of areas. But the knock and talk situations that you'll be going on on Friday, and I hope you all are able to make it, because you will see something that you've probably never seen before, unless you went door-to-door knocking, like campaigning, but here you're not asking for a vote, you're just asking for somebody to call the police if they see something that is not right. You're just asking for someone not to look the other way. That's all you're asking for. It's very simple, and as you all well know, all you, if you just ask someone, all they want to do is let, they just want to be noticed. So if you walk up and knock on their door, hand them the flyer, hand them the door hanger, ask them if they could put a sign in your yard, just like you would if you're politicking, asking for a vote, now you're just asking them to be a good citizen and help make our city safe, and that's what this Combat Initiative's done. And I've been on five or six of these throughout the county, and every time I've gone out, I've seen nothing but positive response from the citizens of Jackson County, and if you come out with us on Friday, and I'll be there, and you, and you, thank you, Mr. Murphy, for being there, if you all come out on Friday, you'll see a difference in how people will treat, how they respond. They want, they want a safe city. They want it. Sometimes they don't know where to turn. They know to call the police, but then it's just, is there anything else that goes along with it? Well, now there is something, here, we've got this, and if you need help, you'll find out, people ask you, well, what if I have this in my neighborhood? Where can I call? Well, the police will be there, and they'll say, well, you can call these numbers, and we'll help you get something resolved. Sometimes people are afraid to call. You have, now, this is programmed to let them know it's okay, so. Do you have any questions? I'd be more than happy to field any questions.
Any questions of Sheriff Sharp? Well, thank you for coming.
Well, thank you. How many will I see on Friday? Excellent, thank you. Thanks for coming. Thanks a lot for letting me speak.
You're back.
Thank you.
Does that conclude the presentation?
If you have any questions or any other information about Combat, our number is on the brochure. If you want a copy of the presentation for, you know, talk about those numbers.
But thank you so much for coming, and we look forward to having your presence, and we will continue to be engaged in this community. Next, we have an introduction and reading of bill 4265.
I'll introduce you, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4265, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Land Bank of Blue Springs, Missouri for staffing services.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, could we have staff just review Land Bank and what that really does?
Who would be the person, Christine, would that be you? Oh, Bob, okay.
That'd probably be me.
Yep.
Well, the Land Bank, I don't know how, do you want me to go back to Land Bank 101?
No, you don't have to go that far back. But all of a sudden, we are creating one, so there must be a need.
We have created a land bank in Blue Springs to take over property in Blue Springs that is foreclosed upon and not of enough value that anybody bids for it in an amount greater than the tax bill and interest and penalties. And if nobody bids high enough to pay off all the taxes and the expenses leading up to the foreclosure, not the mortgage itself, but the taxes and penalties, if it's located in Blue Springs, it'll be transferred to the Blue Springs Land Bank. The Blue Springs Land Bank will take title to it. The Blue Springs Land Bank will then market it on the website and things like that. The Blue Springs Land Bank will then market it on the website and things like that. Or possibly, some of these properties are little kind of remnants that can go to a neighboring property to take over and take over the maintenance on. The Blue Springs will also be in charge of maintaining these properties to the extent possible, based on its finances. It's the properties that the land trust, Jackson County Land Trust had before, and we usually ended up maintaining them anyway, so it's kind of a switch of that. We are getting all of the properties in Blue Springs that are already in the land trust, and then as the foreclosures occur, we will take over some of those properties. The importance of this land bank agency also stems from the NID properties that could be foreclosed on, so that if nobody buys them and takes over, pays the taxes and the special assessments, the city would end up with the property rather than the Jackson County Land Bank. So that's another big thing. The ordinance that's before you tonight is to provide some staffing and some funds to the land bank as it's gearing up and getting its feet on the ground, so to speak. It's a three-year contract, I think, ends up in September of sixteen, and it basically provides some services through staffing from the city. And it also provides that if and when the land bank receives funds that give it some money, it will reimburse the city for those expenses and everything.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah, you brought up the NID there, and in the past week, it's been brought to my attention, I recall that city staff did make the recommendation to put other protections in line to the citizens before, you know, we would get to this point where the land would go out for basically auction. In other words, letters of credit against the developers to hold them accountable in case we were put in this situation. Staff did the right thing back then. It was actually in there, and I voted for it, and we actually voted to keep the, or whether or not to remove the letters of credit, and they were, the city council decided not to keep the letters of credit, and I think that was a poor decision because now the city is faced with this and having to create a land bank and not holding the developers accountable for this.
Okay. That concludes your comments. Anybody else? Okay. We need a vote. Did we get, wouldn't it do, I think we got discussion, but we didn't take a vote for the first one? Okay, so all in favor say aye. Aye, both same sign.
Second reading of Bill number four-two-six-five, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Land Bank of Blue Springs, Missouri for staffing services.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Cobell?
Aye.
Councilman Levisy?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Chair unanimously giving an ordinance number forty-four forty-four.
Next, we have an introduction and reading of Bill forty-two sixty-six.
I'll introduce you, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill number four-two-six-six, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances city of Blue Springs, Missouri by amending section six-hundred point zero-six-zero point G, six-hundred point zero-six-zero M, and six-hundred point zero-six-zero N, and six-hundred point zero-six-zero O to authorize sales for off-premises consumption in order to conform to changes made in state law.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye, both same sign.
Second reading of Bill number four-two-six-six, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances city of Blue Springs, Missouri by amending section six-hundred point zero-six-O, G, six-hundred point zero-six-zero M, six-hundred point zero-six-zero N, and six-hundred point zero-six-zero O to authorize sales for off-premises consumption in order to conform to changes made in state law.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Cobell?
Aye.
Councilman Levisy?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Chair unanimously giving an ordinance number forty-four forty-five.
It brings us to mayoral announcements. We're very happy, for those that don't know, to announce that Chris Sandy had a prefix in front of his title that's been removed, and it's called interim. That interim has been removed, and Chris is now, has been named Public Works Director for the city of Blue Springs. Very well-deserved and a very capable person, and we welcome you aboard as the new head of Public Works. The next thing is there's an election tomorrow. CJC has an election tomorrow. Polls open at six AM and close at seven PM. So we want to encourage those in the audience, as well as those might be watching on cable TV seven, to get out and vote. It's your duty, it's your responsibility, and we hope you do that. We have two cancellations. We have the planning commission meeting Monday, August twelfth, has been canceled due to lack of agenda items, and also the board of zoning adjustment meeting on August fourteenth has been canceled as well. I think that's it on announcements. I'm gonna get to that. Yeah, and so that's gonna bring me to thoughts to partner. This is one that Councilman Cobell sent me back on July ninth, and so we're gonna share it with you tonight. It's from Warren Buffett, and I quote, "Someone sitting in the shade today because someone planted a tree a long time ago," end quote. Very profound. That concludes my announcements, so now I'm gonna ask Cindy Miller to come up. She's going to share with us an award that they received in Downtown Alive. So welcome, Cindy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilman, for letting me speak to you tonight. I just, like you said, wanted to give a quick update of a part of the narrative that went with our outstanding affiliate award application. I thought I'd share some of those details with you. Most of it, I hope you know, and if you don't, then maybe we can learn a little bit. I have a little video thing, or not video, but a slideshow.
There we go.
Yeah, Kim's already loaded it, I think. I don't know. Get out of your way.
That's all right.
It's all right.
Do you want to tell them that?
Yes. There we go.
Just press that one time.
Okay, thank you. So, as you all know, a little over two years ago, we came before the city council to ask for your support so we could participate in Missouri Main Street's affiliate grant program, and you agreed to do that and allowed us to move forward. So in July two thousand and eleven, we were awarded the affiliate grant by Missouri Main Street with the goal of creating our local volunteer organization that would undertake a self-sustaining revitalization program. And we have many projects in place right now, some in progress, that will improve our downtown Blue Springs area for the benefit of our entire community. So, because of that, the Missouri Main Street Conference was coming up the last week of July here in Kansas City this year, and so we decided to nominate our group, nominate ourselves, for the Outstanding Affiliate Award. So we had to come up with a summary of some of the important accomplishments. One of the first things we did, we decided to call our committees teams because that we felt built teamwork necessary for our efforts to be successful. So, first of all, the organization team developed our mission statement and our vision statement. We developed this presentation to the city council to ask for the ongoing financial support in the form of that two-year commitment of five thousand per year. And as you recall, you all unanimously approved our request based on our past successes and our plans for the future. We developed our bylaws, our articles of incorporation, and we formed a board of directors. We obtained our five-oh-one-C-three status in August of two thousand and twelve, a little over a year later from when we originated with our program. We developed our Friends of Downtown Alive program along with the funding structure for ongoing financial support, and as of May, we have raised over eight thousand dollars for that program. We developed a facts and benefits of Blue Springs Downtown Alive as a handout so we could increase awareness of what our accomplishments and our plans were. And we are working on the development of our webpage, which is very close to going live. Then our design team, we worked to obtain the matching CDBG funds for the big facade renovation project on one of the largest buildings in downtown that was always kind of a forefront in the downtown group's minds. We have recently obtained approval from KCPNL to install Downtown Alive banners on the light poles along Main Street. And we have a lot of partnerships. We partnered with the Little Free Library Program to build and display four free libraries in our downtown district. We're working on more, but we have four to date, and those have been a huge success. Partnered with the Blue Springs School District for a student art display in our downtown merchants and businesses during this past holiday season. We partnered with the Blue Springs Art League to try to help bring this year's temporary art exhibit to downtown Blue Springs, so we're thrilled to have that here. We work closely with the city of Blue Springs to resolve the lack of public parking in the downtown district, and we feel really like we're making progress there. Obtained approval to install additional wayfinding signs directing traffic to our downtown district and to the free parking. And we've done downtown beautification efforts like our flowerpots and our holiday decorations, and the snowman project that we had this past year. And then we purchased a new sign for the farmer's market in an effort to keep the market located downtown instead of moving out onto the Seven Highway Quarter like they were considering. And then for economic restructuring team, we provided input to the city's Main Center Redevelopment Corporation's tax abatement policy, which was renewed during April two thousand and thirteen, and improvement investment thresholds have now been substantially lowered, and we hope that'll be an incentive to our downtown property owners to make some improvements to their buildings that qualify for tax abatement. We obtained a seat on the downtown review board, which is a board that serves as the governing body for the downtown development code, so we feel really happy to be included in that. And we had a complete review of the downtown master plan and presented that to our group so that the group would have a better understanding of the plan. And then our promotions team has been successful in creating downtown events that generate awareness and bring people to downtown, as well as events that help generate funds for the operation of our organization. And some of our events are our annual chili lunch, our spring fling, Quarks in Canvas, Holiday Open House. We partnered with the City Parks and Recs Department for their car cruise night, the movie nights, and the trick-or-treat Main Street, and the five-k run. And we partnered with the Chamber of Commerce on the Fall Fun Fest, and also with the BS, Blue Springs Business Association on the mayor's Christmas tree lighting. So, just to kinda get into my visuals here, there's, you know, where we were named the semifinalist and then ultimately the outstanding affiliate community recipient. There's where we are at the conference, and Kent Edmondson also attended and was too shy, wouldn't come up and get his picture taken, I'm not sure about that. There's the actual award, so we're gonna pass that around and share, hopefully each of the businesses will have a little chance to display that, and, you know, because it's all of our award for all of our participation. This is our Quarks in Canvas event from this year. And then this is kind of a neat project. We came up with this bag that we have Downtown Alive on one side and the farmer's market on the other. We shared the expense, and the farmer's market sells some and Downtown Alive sells some, and I see people carrying them to farmer's market. I've seen them at Hy-Vee. Everybody carries them all around town, so we're kind of real, that's just another way of getting our name out there, and, you know, people can say, "Hey, what's going on with Downtown Alive?" And, you know, maybe get a little bit involved. And then, here's another thing we're really proud of. We have a new business that's opened up in our downtown district right on Main Street, which is Brewers, so their grand opening was today. So we went down and organized a balloon lift, kind of to kick off their grand opening, so that was a real success. A lot of people came out, and, you know, of course, we wish them and all the businesses luck. And then we have another new business that hasn't officially had their grand opening, but they are open now at Shooter's Mart, and they're a guns and ammo retail operation that's here on Eleventh Street, so we feel really proud to have them in our district too. So, included with our nomination form, we had several of the flyers from various events, and our friend's letter, and our facts and benefits, and all those supporting documents. And based on that, you know, we won the award. So, it's our belief that the many friendships that we've established along the way, along with our volunteers known as Friends of Downtown Alive, has what's helped make us successful. We have partnerships with the city, the school district, other local organizations and entities, and that's helped us reach the goals of our mission statement. So I just mainly wanted to update you with that information. And then really, in summary, we believe winning the outstanding award with competition that came from the entire state of Missouri validates that we are moving in the right direction, and we want to continue following the work plans that were developed by each of our teams. We want to take it to the next level. The next level of the Missouri Main Street program is for us to become an associate city. Most of the cities that are successful in doing so have a full-time staff person, so that's kind of the next step for us. We're working on how we can do that. That's what we believe will take us to the next level. So, again, we appreciate the support of the city. I don't think we would be where we are if we didn't have your support initially to get us started, so we're indebted to you, and we're trying to make you proud, and I think the Outstanding Affiliate Award really validates that. So, thank you very much.
Well, your group has certainly gotten out of the gate in a very quick, with a very quick start to be recognized that soon. And not only are you alive, but you're active, and we applaud that.
Yeah.
Certainly very supportive of what you're trying to do to try to bring a lot more interest downtown.
We're working hard to do that. And then one more thing, you know, we had this on our very first presentation. We've kinda got this, it's a little bit of our slogan, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has," and that was said by Margaret Mead, so we've kinda...
Any comments from the council?
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes.
This award is an honor to this group for what they've accomplished, and it also represents the quality of leadership of this group, of which Cindy is, and speaks highly of them, and they've really got their act together and have done some great things downtown, so it looks good for the future of downtown Blue Springs.
And what else?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I think all of us echo those comments that we were proud of you. Congratulations, and keep going on the move.
Yeah, we're very proud of our entire group, so thank you. Thanks for letting me speak tonight.
And thanks for coming and sharing it with us this evening. Do we have an executive session we need to go into?
Yes, for potential litigation and...
Okay, is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss possible litigation?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Councilman Levisy?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Cobell?
Aye.
Chair unanimously.
We'll pause for a couple of minutes to allow our visitors to be excused, and then we'll go into executive session.